You're on. Good afternoon. Welcome to the joint session. Today is Monday, May 13th, 2024. It's approximately 1:00 P. M. I'm Mayor Enriquez. Thank you County Commissioners for joining us today for this session. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our our country and also for the men and women of the Las Cruces Police and Fire Department as they keep our city safe 24/7, 365. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing we'll start out with is jobs of the week. Sarah Rainey.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Rainey. I am the one-stop coordinator for the Southwest Region of the Workforce Connections Office. Let me get this pulled up real quick. All right, for jobs of the week for this week, May 13th, 2024, for the City of Las Cruces, we have the Youth Program Specialist Two. The position starts at 1877 an hour and it is a continuous posting at this time. We also have a 911 call taker for the MVR DA. Actually, there are several positions open for that job description. The posting starts at 1872 an hour and the posting ends on the 30th. We have a customer experience specialist for the GMH Housing, Military Housing at White Sands Missile Range. That posting closes on the 17th of July. For Pecan Grill and Brewery, we actually have quite a few positions open. There's an assistant manager, kitchen manager, expediter. There's two positions. Two line cooks, two prep cooks, two dishwashers, and two bartenders, and multiple server positions. So there's multiple opportunities at that location. Also for the shed, they had several opportunities open. There's a breakfast and lunch line cook and a dishwasher. And also, we wanted to include the farm workers. There's multiple positions with Adams Produce Incorporated. Referrals to these positions need to be done through our career consultants in our offices. So anyone that's interested in those farm positions needs to go to our office over on Alameda Street. Upcoming events, we have our Community of Hope. We have that monthly. Over there, we have the job readiness fairs. Over there, we sometimes have, we have employers. We do job readiness, help with interview skills, resume writing and whatnot. We help them look for jobs. So that's our monthly event. That one's coming up on the 15th of this week. We also have our Career Essentials on May 28th. That is a no-cost employment service that occurs monthly, and it is across our region as well. So those events can be found on EmployeeNM if anybody needs more information or needs to register. And then just another reminder, we're open from 8:00 to 6:00 P. M. Instead of 8:00 to 5:00, we have an extra hour there for those that need to come in for extra services. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have pets of the week. Amy DeFelix.
Hello. Of course, my name is Amy DeFelix. I am one of the rescue coordinators for the Animal Services Center of the Mesia Valley. And each week I present our pets of the week. I pick and present them. And we always start off with our cat of the week. This week, her name is Selena Kyle, like Catwoman. Her number is 74863. And she says, "I'm a sweet and quiet girl who just wants a nice, calm, loving family to take me in. I'm past my kitten stage, but every once in a while, a toy might peek my interest for a little bit. I'd much rather spend my days surveying my domain, taking naps, and getting neck scratches for my favorite people." And then we have our dog of the week. This week is Ace. His number is 62535. And he says, "I'm a couple weeks shy of being at the ASCMV for an entire year, so I'm hoping I find my forever family before then. Especially at first, I could get energetic and excited when meeting new people or being out on a walk, but I settle down quickly. I can sometimes have an independent spirit, but I really do like to come back to my people for some pets and cuddles at the end of the day." And for events this week, we actually have two different offsite adoptions this weekend. We'll start off with our offsite adoptions at Farmacia. We'll be there Saturday, May 18th, from 11:00 A. M. to 1:00 P. M. And then we'll also have offsite adoptions at Sunset Grill this Sunday, May 19th, and we'll be there from 11:00 to 2:00. And then here are all of our website links, our general website, ascmv.org, and then all of our social media. We have Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, and then YouTube and Spotify, Apple Podcasts is where we upload episodes to our podcast Tales from the Paw Side. And that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Amy. Next for the agenda items, 3.1 opioid settlement, community needs assessment report. Barbara Como.
Good afternoon, City Council and County Commission, and welcome to today's joint work session where we'll be giving you some information regarding the opioid settlement funds we have received. Before I talk about what we're going to talk about, I'm going to introduce our presenters today. Besides myself, Chief Administrative Officer for the city, we also have on my far left, Shara Thorpe, the County Opioid Settlement Coordinator, and also Liz Olivares from NMSU Crimson Research Program Manager. So today's agenda, we're going to provide you with a brief overview of the settlement funds. Of course, we gave you more detailed information at the September 11th work session last year, but we're here to provide you with an update on that. We're going to go over the Advisory Council form to assist both the City Council and the County Commission in the development of expenditure recommendations. And we'll talk about process and benchmarks timelines for those recommendations to come forward to you both. And we're going to spend the majority of our time talking about the NMSU Crimson Research Community Needs Assessment, which was commissioned to support the development of those expenditure recommendations. The other thing I wanted to mention is we will be providing you with quite a bit of information and data today. I know that you received the PowerPoint in advance because of that. In order to get through the material, we'd like to hold our questions to the end. All of our slides are numbered. We'll be happy to go back to any slides that you might have specific questions about, but that's what we'll be able to to get through the material and information for your discussion. So first of all, just an overview of the opioid settlement funds. These settlements pertain to the manufacturers, distributors, and retailers. There may be further settlements in the future, but at this point, we have agreements with these entities. The city is slated to receive almost $10 million and the county $14.5 million. Sunderland Park, $711,000 over a 17-year period. The use of these funds, of course, is to address the harms of the opioid crisis, and many of the uses are governed by the settlement agreement. Funds are held separately at both the city and the county, and ultimately, the two separate bodies will be deciding on the use of those funds independently. And the funds received to date, the city has received $3.5 million of the 10, almost $10 million we will be receiving. The county has received $4 million of the 5, excuse me, of the almost $15 million that the county will be receiving. So again, following the schedule for the settlements, we have many years still to receive settlement funds, but we've received a good portion of them upfront to date. With that, I'm going to be turning this over to Shara Thorpe to talk more about our guiding principles and the opioid settlement advisory council.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Council members. The principles for the use of opioid funds provide planning and process-level guidance for state and local policymakers and how to effectively spend money from the opioid settlements. Our five guiding principles, we spend money to save lives, use evidence to guide spending, invest in youth prevention, focus on racial equity, develop a fair and transparent process. Our opioid settlement advisory council was built on the John Hopkins Bloomberg, which developed 10 indicators to assess the readiness, and so we used those principles to develop our advisory council. And it is comprised of members from the community, representative of members from the community. And I would like to just take one moment. We do have some advisory members here in the audience. I'd like to ask them to stand at this time and just give a little wave to y'all, just so you can see who those are. Thank you so much for being here. So our people in our advisory are comprised of, like I said, people from the community. And you've been introduced before, but some of the folks are here today. We do have people from all aspects of our stakeholders, and I am so grateful that they are part of our advisory. A few others from our advisory council. Vital Strategies is a global health organization that believes that every person should be protected by a strong public health system. They're the lead partner in the Bloomberg Overdose Prevention Initiative, and they work with us as well as other states to combat the overdose epidemic. They do fund my position, and they also funded the needs assessment that Crimson Research will be talking about. And with that, I will hand it back over to Barbara, who will go over our process and benchmarks.
Thank you, Shara. So I mentioned that we had come forward in the September timeframe to both the City Council and the County Commission to discuss the opioid settlement funds at that time and the establishment of the advisory council. So you'll see that as complete on our list of benchmarks for this initiative. And then since then, we have been working to establish the resources available in our community, gather data, and develop an outreach plan, and also to formulate the framework for the needs assessment, which Liz will speak more about in detail. That's where we are right now. That's what you see highlighted in green is as conducting the needs assessment and then providing that finalized report so that the advisory council can formulate recommendations that will come forward to the City Council and the County Commission. Once the City Council and County Commission decide on the use of funds, then an implementation plan will be developed, and of course, we'll have evaluation and reporting, not only of the funds that are expended, but of course, for the outcomes that we would like to see based on the expenditures that will be made. So that is the the timeframe that we'll be operating under. And now I'd like to turn it over to Shara to talk about how we develop the framework for the needs assessment.
We've been working really hard to do this incredible work, and we'll be sharing that. Liz will be sharing that here in a minute. But our teams worked really hard with Crimson Research and the evaluation team at NMSU, collectively created a plan and gathered some baseline data, an initial analysis, which we will be presenting, and eventually a finalized public report, and we will be updating data as needed. And with that being said, I would like to introduce Liz Olivares with Crimson Research, who will provide us with an overview of that, those data findings. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Liz Olivares. I am with Crimson Research at New Mexico State University. We are housed in the College of Health Education and Social Transformation in the Department of Public Health Sciences. And we've been contracted by Vital Strategies to conduct the opioid settlement needs assessment. It first started and was led by the advisory council, who provided some feedback on the type of insight that they would like to to carry out. And, all right, so I am on my slide. So we started with three types of data measures. Now, please note that these data are very raw preliminary data. They have not been presented to anybody at this moment. We have not had the opportunity to yet present it to our advisory council, so you are all seeing and hearing about this for the first time today, although I understand that you were all previewed to the information beforehand. So the first set of data was secondary administrative data review that provided data from organizations and agencies that are part of a routine administrative or operational processes. This includes data from the Mesia Valley Regional Dispatch Authority, New Mexico Department of Health, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program, New Mexico Health Indicator and Data Statistics, Warm Lines, Metro Narcotics, the Las Cruces Fire Department, and Las Cruces Police Departments, among other data sources. Then the second group of data is from our focus groups, which Doñana County Health and Human Services facilitated the recruitment and carrying out to collect the information from seven different focus groups, and I will be going into these in depth. But we did focus on having three to 10 participants at each focus group, who were all recruited from where we identified hotspots and high-need areas of overdose. And then the last data collection was from street outreach surveys. Again, this was all primary data collected by Doñana County Health and Human Services and volunteers that were trained in an instrument developed by Crimson Research and to determine attitudes, behaviors, and knowledge, and and get an outline for what we see in our community. Now, for the secondary data analysis, we know that New Mexico is among the highest of drug overdose rates across the U. S. It has surged in death rates threefold since 1990. And there's been a significant rise in deaths linked to methamphetamine and fentanyl in the last more recent years. And of these, we know that 90% of individuals with an opioid use disorder used two or more substances within the same year, and of those, 75% were associated with polysubstance use between 2016 and 2020. Now, we know that Doñana County has a population that is more diverse and higher poverty rates when compared to the rest of the state and the U. S. And we have a higher rate among persons living without health insurance and lower education rates. So just so we can keep that picture of what our what our population and demographics look like as we go through these slides. When we assessed the 988, which is the suicide crisis line, and the New Mexico crisis access line, and the peer-to-peer warm, warm line, we found that there's a 26% increase in the 988, whereas the New Mexico crisis and access line fairly stayed about the same. But it is interesting that to note that our warm line and our 988 line use has increased. We have also seen, and we've actually seen a decrease from 2021 to 2022 in New Mexico. However, Doñana County saw an increase in opioid overdose emergency department visits from 2021 to 2022. Now, this data is limited. We don't have any current data because 2023 data has still not been published and still preliminary. So this is as recent as we can get, everybody. And it's important to note that our fatal overdose rate is 26.9, which is much higher than the overall overdose emergency department visits. Now, when we look at the fatal overdose data involved substances, we see that the number one causing overdose, fatal overdose is fentanyl at 33, excuse me, at 46% for the county. New Mexico, 33%. So that is substantially higher than across the state. Methamphetamine is a little lower at 22% compared to New Mexico at 25%. Alcohol is 8% compared to New Mexico's 11%. And cocaine is 6% compared to 8% in New Mexico. Then among the highest impacted race and ethnicity, we have 67% Hispanics, who have had the highest fatal overdose rate, followed by white, 28%, and then Black and African Americans, 5% in Doñana County. Now, we've seen in the, in the most recent years, that this is between 2022 and 2023, we saw a statewide decrease at 12%. Now, this data is not printed out on this slide because this is that preliminary data where we're still seeing changes, and it could change even after this presentation today. However, when we looked at Doñana County, we saw a 7% increase. And one thing that was worth noting was that in Chaberal specifically, and just from heat maps, we saw that the rate of overdose mortality is actually more than doubled from 2022 to 2023. On this slide, we listed out some identified opioid treatment programs. Now, this may, is not a complete list. We may have some that are missing and some that that have changed in what they provide. But for the most part, outpatient centers include seven agencies, such as Ideal Option, Amador Health Center, La Clinica de Familia, Esperanza Guidance, Alternative Recovery, and MDOH, an elite methadone clinic. We have four agencies that provide inpatient treatment and 11 agencies that offer harm reduction services across Doñana County. But it, for this slide, what's important to note is that most of these agencies are located within Las Cruces. Now here, we're looking at the naloxone distribution and usage measures across New Mexico. We do not yet have data relevant to Doñana County in 2023. However, we do know that in Doñana County, there were 2,884 naloxone doses distributed compared to New Mexico's 35,805. Now, these are important as, it's a form of harm reduction that includes a practical set of strategies to reverse overdose and save drug use devices, and also prevent drug use-related deaths. All right, that ends our secondary administrative data assessment. Now, we're jumping into the focus group recruitment, where again, there were seven groups that participated. We separated them by key informants and lived-in-living experience. Now, because our participant count was really low, we merged all of our information into the two groups so that no individual would be identified for having participated. It was a three, three-week recruitment effort to identify key informants and lived-in-living experience participants. Now, the key informants included individuals who are among our community leadership, law enforcement entities, fire departments, and other behavioral health experts and harm reduction and social service providers across Doñana County. And among the lived-in-living experience, we had individuals participate from youth at Los Montañas High School and as well as Southern Doñana County, Las Cruces, LGBTQIA+. Now, this slide is a breakdown of the demographics of those participants. We had 21 key informants participate. Among those, we had predominantly first responders and then behavioral health experts and harm reduction experts as well. We predominantly had 85.7% of those participants who were white. 42.9% were non-Hispanic, excuse me, and 52% were Hispanic. And then among the lived experience, we had a really high turnout rate among the youth group, so they're overrepresented in this sample. Where 41% of them were 15 to 17 years old, and then 35.3% were between the ages of 18 to 34. And we did also have predominantly white participants, 87.5% and 94% were Hispanic. Now, the first question that we asked our key informants, and also please note that all of these responses are from our participants. We've only modified the information slightly just so that the information is presentable and could be made public. But otherwise, is, we use the terms that were provided by the participants. So when we asked the participants, "What substance or drug causes the most problems in your community?", the key informants responded alcohol, fentanyl, methamphetamine, fentanyl, marijuana, and heroin as the top substances that cause problems in the community. We included a quote here by one of our participants, who says, "The difference in the last several years, of course, has been fentanyl." In question two, we asked, "What groups are most affected by substance use?" And we also provided our participants with a glossary of terms, so everyone knew how we identified groups and what substances were referred to and so on. Of those groups that were identified, young adults were the top that that came out in our theme thematic analysis. And one of the quotes that we identified as being significant was, "I've been seeing a lot of youth going into our facility to pick up syringes, pick up smoking kits, because I'm starting to see a lot of people smoking fentanyl and other substances." Then second, we have first responders and law enforcement, and the unhoused and low-income who are most affected or identified as most affected by substance use. Question three, we asked, "What substance use recovery treatment or harm reduction resources are most successful in your community?" And of those themes that arose, we've identified harm reduction and Narcan, medication-assisted treatment, which has shown a lot of promise and success in even our community, case management with a continuum of care follow-up and reduction of roadblocks, access to treatment, and combination of treatments. Were among the top themes. In question four, we asked, "What substance use prevention resources are needed in our community?" And among the top responses, we identified home environment and family resources as a number one, where the impact where the impact of poverty on the family was brought up and how this is a complex family issue with no simple solution. Then improved case management and revised penalties for relapse and permanent supportive housing, enforced treatment orders for substance use and mental health and criminal justice system, increased access and availability of counseling therapy, provide a community mobile healthcare, and funding effective efforts versus historically ineffective efforts. Where fund of multiple issues rather than focusing on just one, siloed funding is ineffective. Those are comments that were made by the participants. We asked our participants, "What barriers are there to access resources?" The, among the top responses was the medical profession, where there's an over-reliance of medication for youth. "The medical field hasn't helped the youth," was one direct quote. Lack of comprehensive care, over-prescription of opiates, were all some of the subthemes that were identified among that medical profession theme. Then long wait times for mental health services, transportation, early intervention, which plays an integral role among case managers providing comprehensive support, educational initiatives to increase awareness and understanding of substance use issues, stigma, cultural norms and beliefs, and lack of follow-up. Then we asked participants, "What suggestions do you have for the city, county, state about how these funds should be spent to have a real impact in your community?" Again, these are the top themes that were identified. And the top one at education, where we should educate about stigma and accessing services to mental health. One of the quotes said, "Let's get some mandatory education in our schools to our teachers, to the school support staff about stigma, about accessing services, about mental health, co-occurring disorders in general." Then a centralized facility, such as a city facility with transportation, case managers, doctors, whoever needs to be on deck. Sustainable programs for the long term, where when someone suggested, implement one or two programs to sustain long-term. Transportation, focus on barriers to care, such as affordable transportation. Community-based initiatives, where the focus on recovery to work programs, similar to Community of Hope, Daze Labor Program was specifically mentioned. Exploration of safe-use sites, comprehensive insurance coverage, and early intervention for adolescents, including medication-assisted treatment for them. Now, we're moving on to the next group of focus group participants, who are the lived-in-living experience. When we asked them similar question, "What substance or drug causes the most problems in your community?" Their identified substances are fentanyl, blues, heroin, methamphetamine, and alcohol. Now, the blues is, FDA labeled this as a laced fentanyl, so it's not just purely fentanyl that people are taking. We asked our participants, "What groups are most affected by substance use?" They identified youth and adolescents, where peer influence, lack of parental guidance, or they may not be using substances but are affected by family substance use, were two of the subthemes that were identified. Older people and elderly are over-prescribed medications, low income, and the unhoused. Next, we asked, "Where would you, family or friends, go for help in your community to seek support for substance use issues?" And of the top themes identified, facilities was the number one. And some of those agencies or facilities that were named were Family and Youth Innovations for Harm Reduction Programs, La Clinica de Familia, Alianza, and Peak Hospital. And then programs that they would turn to are Alcoholics Anonymous, Southwest Pathways, which is a program offered by the New Mexico Department of Health, and Narcotics Anonymous, were some of the subthemes that we found in those programs. Rehabilitation, support groups, church. Barriers and obstacles where resources are typically far away in El Paso or Las Cruces. Participants were talking about having to go out from their own communities in order to receive some of these services. We then asked participants, "What type of experience do you have with recovery or treatment resources?" And a lot of them identified personal experiences and family members' experiences, which included arrests, in and out of rehab, relapse, where four people attended rehab, either themselves or family member. Three people talked about their relapse experience and people adhering to these programs. Importance of sharing rehab and recovery experiences to help others was the second theme that was mentioned. And then the third, stigma and lack of resources after exiting rehab, making the adjustment difficult. Question five, we asked participants, "What type of experience have you had with harm reduction resources?" People listed community recovery. One participant said, "I recovered my family, my trust in my friends, in my work, many things, my health, and those experiences are what have me here alive and within the community." Then community lack of resources. One participant mentioned, "I think that these problems exist as big problems. For example, here in the community of Anthony or in Vado or Del Cerro, there are no such programs." Then the next theme was home-based distribution of, and education, such as education about Narcan use for family and individuals using substances, and then syringe exchange. We then asked these participants, "What might keep someone from seeking substance use services in your community?" Participants responded stigma. "Many times we believe that this is something that if I go there to Alcoholics Anonymous, what are people going to think of me or what am I going to say?" was a direct quote from one of those participants. Lack of support. People need family support. People need friends' support. People need professional support. And access to care. So you know the people out in Chaparral and transportation is a big thing. You know, maybe bringing services closer to them was another direct quote. And then cultural influence, where people don't always accept or know that they have a problem and this can sometimes be reinforced by family or friends. Then we asked participants, "What suggestions do you have for the city council, excuse me, for the city, the county, and state about these funds and how they should be spent to have a real impact in your community?" The top response was break cycle of addiction, more support services for children of family members who use substances, resources for youth, community mental health and rehabilitation services, early intervention for youth, generational trauma, and improve access to services. One of the quotes that I pulled out for early intervention was, "I feel like we should go back to when we used to use or used to concentrate more like little kids, you know, like elementary, middle school, maybe even high school still." Breaking the cycle of addiction, most support services for children and family members who use substances. As a conclusion to the focus group data that we, that we assessed, the top substance use issue identified was alcohol, fentanyl, blues, methamphetamine, and heroin. At-risk groups are the youth, young adults, unhoused, and low income. And barriers to resources are medical profession, wait times, transportation, early intervention, stigma, and access to care. And community-based recommendations are education, centralized facility, streamlined crisis intervention services, early intervention, breaking the cycle of addiction. These are just those highlighted themes that were added up. Okay, now we are jumping into our last data point, which is the outreach survey. Again, we trained volunteers to recruit participants and they recruited 53 participants from the streets surrounding Solano and Alpaseo, Solano and Amador, at Walmart on Walton, at Amador Health Center, those including individuals who are currently receiving substance use treatment for services, at the FYI Plus parking lot. And these individuals were asked 20, it was a 23-item questionnaire where the questions were obtained from the National Outcomes Measurement System and other instruments in collaboration with Vital Strategies. They provided some of their instruments and tools that they'd used before. And so we, we gathered some of those questions and tried to narrow down which ones would be the most impactful to inform our community. Of the participants, the majority were male, 62.3% and only 37% female. Our participants were predominantly white, 62.3% and their ethnicity was 64.2% Hispanic or Latino. And most of them were 71.7% or at least 35 and older. And 52.8% were unhoused and 41.5% were housed. And of those, those participants, we asked what ZIP code they reside in. Most of them reside in the 88005 ZIP code. And then 83% were unemployed and 41.5% had less than 12th grade education. Now, these demographics are important to note because they're, the data is not generalizable to our population in Doñana County. We asked our participants, "What substances have you used in the past 30 days and the route of administration?" Of those substances that were identified, tobacco, cannabis, nicotine, methamphetamine, and fentanyl and alcohol were the top substances that were reported. And the route of administration, the top route, was smoking. And we have, actually have the routes broken down by methamphetamine, fentanyl, and heroin. And only 22% of our methamphetamine users used by injection compared to 5% of the fentanyl users used by injection. We asked our participants, "Have you ever attended a treatment program for substance use in the past?" 71.2% said they had. And we asked, "Well, what influenced your initial use or relapse of substance?" 35.8% of those respondents said stress was the influence. 32% said a social environment. And 15% said a lack of supportive social networks. But there were other reasons, such as COVID, ADHD, depression, escaping reality, lack of support, negative emotions, boredom, anxiety, lack of supportive programs, death of family members, trauma, costs of recovery, to ease the pain, and being unhoused, were all reasons that participants listed for either initiating or relapse for substance use. We asked participants, "Are you currently seeking help for substance use?" 58.3% of those participants were not currently seeking help. Then we asked them, "If you wanted to get help for substance use, how would you look for recovery or treatment services?" 50.9% would ask a healthcare provider, 28.3% would go use word of mouth, 13.2% said they would seek an agency to look for recovery treatment services. Others mentioned some specific agencies, such as Casa de Peregrinos, Community of Hope, Tent City, and using a phone, peer support through AA or NA, Narcotics, excuse me, Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous, or caseworker, such as one at FYI Plus or Ideal Options that were specifically listed. We asked participants if they were open to counseling or doctor appointments for substance use. 73.2% of those said that they were open to it. We wanted to know if, if they were open to services, what type would they prefer? 51.4% preferred in-person and telehealth, like a combination, whereas 40.5% preferred in-person as the most useful types of counseling or doctor's appointments. Then we asked if people or if the participants would be open to medication-assisted treatments such as methadone, buprenorphine. 74.3% of the participants are open to medication-assisted treatment. Then we asked participants, "What are some reasons or what are the reasons you haven't gotten treatment even when you wanted to?" And participants identified, or 28% identified as just not being ready. 17% said transportation, 9.4% identified cost, and inconvenient times. Then we asked participants, "How often they carried Narcan on them over the past 30 days?" 57.1% of those participants carried Narcan. And interestingly, we filtered down for those, to those participants who used fentanyl or opioids in the last 30 days. And 60% of those carried fentanyl, I mean, excuse me, carried Narcan while they were using during the last 30 days. 40% of those fentanyl users did not carry Narcan. We asked participants about their experience with treatment and recovery services. Most had reported having experienced, so, excuse me, these are, were open-ended questions on this slide and we identified them thematically, such similar strategies as we did to the focus groups. And recovery programs such as Narcotics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous, substance use counseling and harm reduction were the top themes that, that arose during that analysis. And then positive and negative experiences were also identified. We asked, "What experience do they have with harm reduction resources?" Positive experiences were the most mentioned, such as peer support, needle exchange, safer smoking kits. And then some identified negative experiences, limited knowledge. And when asked about barriers to seeking substance use services, participants mentioned emotional state and feelings, lack of information and resources, willingness, attitudes, and behaviors were the top themes that emerged there. And then suggestions for opioid fund allocation, provision of infrastructure and resources, such as more treatment facilities, housing, and jobs. Then education, information center, and regulations were listed after. I'm going to hand it back over to Shara now. After the slide, excuse me. Overall, participants are open to receiving substance use treatment services and they, they are in need of social support services and promoting safe use among opioid users is also needed. And limitations of this data, again, it's not generalizable. More data should be, either continue to be collected and specifically among opioid substance users.
Some of our next steps, this is Shara Thorpe, Opioid Settlement Coordinator. Hello. Our next steps, working with Crimson Research to complete the report, but then present to our advisory council. Identify those data gaps, identifying more data, evaluating additional resources, or conducting more outreach. Making data-driven decisions. Opioid Advisory Council will use this data to start prioritizing core strategies. Extending our data analysis, establishing a system for collection and reporting, and continuing to conduct evaluation. Begin researching and prioritizing recommendations and making those recommendations to the council and commission by the end of the summer. And with that, I would like to pass over the discussion portion to Barbara.
Thank you very much, Barbara Bincomo, Chief Administrative Officer for the city. I was remiss earlier in talking about the presenters. I did want to also mention Jamie Michael, Director of the Health Department at the county. She co-facilitates the opioid advisory council with me. Couldn't be here today, but of course, has done so much work for this effort, so I just wanted to acknowledge her. But at this point, and of course, I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of information and data we've presented to you, but we certainly want to open it up for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Barbara, and everyone else at present. A lot of, a lot of good information. I'll look to see if there's any questions, which there are. I'll start with Councilor Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, need a lot of time to think about this, but I think the primary question I'd like to have while we have the whole team in the room, would you say that perceptions of the problem and experiences of the problem were lining up pretty well among the three groups? So the first responders, law enforcement providers, those with lived experience, those who are currently, who participated in the outreach program, would you say that we all kind of have the same view of the problem? And if not, where are the main gaps where certain groups are seeing problems that others are not seeing? Does that make sense? Thanks.
Liza Levades with Crimson Research. Thank you for your question. Now, we are still waiting and receiving more data to identify some of those gaps because we haven't been able to overlay these results. But for the most part, as far as the participation goes, the participants did identify similar items. We saw very similar trends among the key informants and the lived experience, and even the street outreach. So, there weren't really too many surprising findings when we came out. But we did hope that the focus groups would provide some of that in-depth information, whereas, you know, just transportation in general, well, what kind of transportation? And we are working through to identify those still. So, like I said, this is very raw preliminary. A lot of these numbers include like one or two individuals, and it was, you know, the top five theme that arose. So, please keep that in mind as you, you know, reflect on the data.
Commissioner.
Of course, thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. So, on Slide thirty-five, you were talking about the outreach survey participants, and you outreach to fifty-three participants, and you listed where they were coming from. So, my question is, is did we solicit any participants outside of the city of Las Cruces?
No, there were no participants outside of the city of Las Cruces. They were all within, predominantly within the hotspots within Las Cruces.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it is limited. We don't have any, like, surrounding areas.
Okay. Is there a way that we can look at outside? You mentioned in one of the earlier slides that Chaparral has doubled their OD rate from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. I would probably consider that a hotspot at that point in time. But I do know that there are issues outside of the city of Las Cruces when you're looking at the South Valley, going up towards Hatch and so forth. And those are concerns because there aren't a lot of services in those areas. So, I would really like to see some data as to what those areas are saying, because they are thirty minutes away from the city, thirty minutes away from services that are more localized here. So, I really would love to see that data. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chaparro.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry to interrupt. One of our advisory council members, Athena Huckabee, also wanted to respond to the question from Councilor McClure related to the overlap of findings from the three groups, if we may.
You mean, Councilor Graham?
That was for Graham, Councilor Graham's question?
Yes.
That'd be fine.
Thank you so much.
And then Commissioner Chaparro.
Thank you for allowing me to speak just briefly. Again, my name is Athena Huckabee, and I'm a member of the Opioid Settlement Advisory Council. I also conducted many of the outreach interviews with individuals in our streets in Las Cruces. I wanted to point out that one of the things that really jumped out to me here is the lack of overlap between the Department of Health data regarding the age of people experiencing fatal overdoses versus the focus that was noted in the focus groups in wanting to focus on youth outreach and youth prevention. If we're seeing in our community that the majority, greater than fifty percent, it looked like, I believe, of people dying from overdoses are fifty and older, then that speaks to me of a disconnect, right, between this focus group emphasis on outreach to youth. For me, as somebody working in substance use, sometimes I feel that people prioritize youth and children because they feel that it's time that intervention can happen so that when the person is fifty years old, that they may not be having these same problems. But I just want to point out that people older, you know, people of middle age in our community are really the ones that are dying. And I think that outreach focused on them was not noted in any of the focus groups, and I thought that was a big disconnect. So, I just wanted to point out what came up for me as I was listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Athena. Commissioner Chaparro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I work in the court system, and so what I'm seeing is that there's a way to perhaps reach the fifty-plus age group. You have treatment courts that include juvenile drug court, adult drug court, veterans court, family reunification, and they're really a captive audience. Most of them are receiving treatment for substance abuse, whether it be alcohol, fentanyl. But as your data shows, at least what I'm seeing in court, is that there's such a sharp increase in fentanyl use. And that is so concerning, and it is specific to, at least in the county that I know of, Oregon, Chaparral, Sandlin Park. And so, to be able to obtain more information in those areas, I think would be helpful to the commissioners at this point. But also, FYI, they have a team program for kids that may perhaps be an avenue to get more answers as to what's going on. But just a suggestion. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Bencomo, and the presenters. I appreciate it. I appreciate your comments, Athena, Ms. Huckabee. I see the information you've collected is really good, but there's a big gap there, and it touches on what Commissioner Chaparro just raised. We don't have any young people here. We have the older people. We don't have any data on what the schools are doing. Councilor Graham and I serve on the Las Cruces Community Schools Board, and those schools, I hope they spread, I hope they spread, horrible, you know, I hope they really grow and continue to become community schools, because it pulls in the entire community. It pulls in the parents, it pulls in everybody. And there's a very good book that I recommend. It's called Anna, Age Eight, and you're probably, hopefully, familiar with it. And it deals with the trauma that the children go through. People don't grow up in happy homes where people, excuse me, people who grow up as happy children generally become productive citizens. They grow up with self-respect, respect for others, they know how to work in a community. And it's a story of catcher in the rye. You get someone who has a dismal childhood, where there isn't any food, where there isn't any love, where there's people coming and going. There's a lot of people living like that, and that's the reality our people live in. And I'm not, I don't know if you covered it, if you did or not, but if you take apples to apples, oranges to oranges, you would see that children who grow up in happy environments, and I'm not saying happy every day, there's a smile, and there's a birthday party to go to every week, and you get a new toy every day. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about a home that, where you have food, where you go to school. And our community schools are doing such a wonderful job. Cheryl Love, who's a principal at Doña Anna Community School in Doña Anna, they bus children in from all over, like Hatch and whatnot, and kids get on the bus at seven o'clock. And they, their mission is to make sure that they have attendance at the school. If there isn't, if there's a problem, if attendance problem, they go to speak with a parent, and they make sure that that child is taken care of. There are children who don't go to school, and when they're asked, why didn't you eat your lunch today? They provide lunches now, but back in the day, even like maybe twenty years ago, a child was asked, why don't you eat your lunch? She'd walk in with her lunch bag every day, and she'd say, oh, I'm not hungry. And she separated herself from other children. God knows what happened to that child. But it turned out that finally, one school board member who would go visit schools just said, oh, well, you know, talk to her a little bit more. Turned out that she carried a rock in that bag, and just to make people think that she had food. And God knows, I mean, again, you know, forgive me for invoking that, you know, the G-word. But, and there was another little girl who would go to school, and this district, the school board member here in Las Cruces would ask children, why do you go to school? Oh, I like my teacher. I like to color. I like recess. This little girl never said anything. And finally, she warmed up to Mrs. Flores, not me, and I'm not Mrs. Flores, it was a teacher, and she finally warmed up to her and said, I come to eat. I come to school to eat. And our community schools, maybe, you know, it's just my suggestion, we really have to look at the root problem. We're looking at the outcomes of God knows what. I mean, and if we don't address the root, if we don't address the root of the problem, we're never going to find the solution. We haven't really defined the problem. You don't define the problem. You're not looking for a solution. We're looking at stats, and you're getting the data, you get the data accumulation of the information that we all see every day. And so, anyway, so I, you know, I'm not a social scientist. I'm not, you know, but, but anyway, I hope I've expressed myself respectfully and clearly. I'm not sure that I have, but if I have any other comments, I'll make them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Bencomo, and I guess, I don't know if this, I'll open it up. I have several questions. I think the last slide, second to last slide, Slide forty-one, indicated that one of the next steps was to establish a system for collection and reporting. How are we collecting data if we don't have an established system for data collection? Unless I'm missing something?
So, thank you, Commissioner Sanchez, Barbara Bencomo, for the record. So, I believe what that refers to is, we were talking about the implementation plan. Once the decisions were made by the city council and county commission as to how funds would be expended, then we need to develop a plan for tracking and reporting, not only the expenditures, but also the outcomes. We don't know yet how the, how these two governing bodies will direct the spending. And so, the development of the data collection and reporting systems might be very customized. There might be tools that we already have. As part of our data inventory that we did early on as an advisory council, we uncovered the resources that we have in the community for data collection. It's just unclear at this point, depending on what the decisions are for the expenditures as to what we will be collecting and reporting and how. And that's part of the evaluation process that we'll go through after we receive guidance from the county commission and the city council on expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Bencomo. And I think my concern is, as Commissioner Chelito Hernandez had brought up, I think there's a lot of concern because when I look at this, between the fifty-three participants that were surveyed and the thirty-eight that were part of the focus groups, we have ninety-one people that were participating, which is point, by, you know, rough estimate, point oh-four percent of this population is driving what the next steps of this. And particularly, when there's not enough representation from outside of the city of Las Cruces, I think I would like for us to get better information to understand because, to help light our way, what next steps are. Because I know, you know, one answer or one solution, it's not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all solution because of the diverse nature of the county. I mean, we have, as was mentioned, in Chaparral, and areas outside of the city, you know, in the county that are more rural versus the very concentrated population center here in the city of Las Cruces. We're going to probably look at needing different solutions here. So, I would love for us to be able to understand and look at data to have a better understanding of, you know, because I think I see, I agree with some of the high points here where it becomes a lot of access to the services. It becomes an education piece. There are several things that are in here that I think are, obviously, we need to address. But again, like you said, as we develop those next steps, I'd love for us to be able to get that more information. I did have one other question on Slide sixteen and Slide eighteen, which was about call, or some of the increase in calls here and for ODs. And I didn't know, when we talked about Chaparral, are these, is this data based off of the residents of the victims, or is this based off of where the calls originated?
Okay, I'll just speak for my seat now. This is Liza Levades, and thank you for your questions. The data is from the entire county, so all of the calls, and we would have to speak directly to our data source to specify where those addresses were from because we did not collect addresses. We just got the raw, the counts for the total number of calls and the breakdown per year. So, it was interesting to see that there was an increase in that. But earlier, you asked about data and surveillance and data collection processes, and I'd like to say that there were extreme challenges collecting all of the data. Even within one agency, where one year to the next, the data is just either entered differently or collected differently, and to not have twenty-twenty-three data, we can't even speak to what's happening right now either, because it's still raw data. It hasn't been published. We were fortunate enough to have some of our partners share some of those preliminary findings, but it was, you know, that's the no. It could change at any time because it's not, it hasn't been cleaned up. But we are very limited in our county with surveillance measures, and that's my, that's my own intake, having worked with some of the data and trying to find where we can collect from. We have a lot of partners who are willing and wanting. I think it's just a matter of having a more systematic approach to what's out there.
Okay. Like I said, I would, and the reason I ask is because I would love to understand if the calls are happening because people are hanging out in certain areas, or if, like you said, if their residences are, they're going home, and then, you know, I guess there's a lot to look at this data. The other one is on Slide eighteen, where we talked about the overdoses, and then the naloxone doses and the reversals. Because I just, it's interesting that in terms of the number of distributed, like on table two here, that seems to line up with the efforts that we've had with Doña County to try to get those out into the hands of residents here in the county, which, you know, the reason I say that, it's about eight to, about eight percent of the, of those issued, those doses distributed are in Doña County, which is about ten percent of the state of New Mexico. But when you look at the reversals, it's a stark difference. And so, I'd be curious, and this might be just as we kind of go along, to have a better understanding of, is this, is it just, are we not reporting, or are we not getting them into the hands of the people that actually need it? So, and I see, Ms. Huckabee, I don't know.
My name is Athena Huckabee. Again, previous to my position at Ideal Option, I managed the program at Doña County Health and Human Services doing naloxone distribution and education. And I also do naloxone and distribution education throughout the state and have a contract with BHSD doing that statewide. Maybe I should, that's not signed, so technically not yet. But anyway, I do, I do work statewide with naloxone distribution. And I think this speaks to two things. One is the, you know, the emphasis around getting naloxone into the hands of people who use drugs. So, when we get naloxone into the hands of people who are not using drugs or who are not acquainted with people using drugs, that is all well and good, but we tend to refer to that as preventative naloxone, right? It sits in people's drug cabinets, it sits in people's cars. You know, I carry some with me all the time. I've never actually had to respond to an overdose. We saw in the slide that, you know, sixty percent of people using fentanyl were carrying naloxone, which is great, but that leaves forty percent that are not. And so, I think that's where you're seeing that disconnect. We have a lot of emphasis in getting it in the hands of police, social workers, first responders, schools. I think that's all well and good and quite important. But also, I think what's extra important is that we get it in the hands of people who use drugs, because those are the people that respond to overdoses, and we would see that gap close. My two cents.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huckabee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Sanchez, I just did, I want to add one thing with respect to the information on the residents and addresses. I did sit through a presentation with HIDA where we were talking about the difficulty of obtaining some of the data, and some of that is not able to be
not able to be conveyed to us for HIPAA reasons. Um, and so, it does present a little bit of a difficulty to pinpoint some of the, some of that demographic data. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bencomo. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Uh, Counselor Corran.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and, and your work on collecting this data. I know it's an extraordinary effort to especially get the inputs of folks who are experiencing substance use disorder and, and using drugs in the community. Um, I have a couple of specific questions related to this, and then I have a, of course, question more than a comment, because, you know, um, this is my jam, and I'm a politician, and that's what we do, comments, comments more than questions. Um, but my first few questions relate to how the money can be spent specifically. I think, um, uh, it feels like there is a very clear indication that, um, humans are going to solve this problem, not buildings, um, and perhaps cars or vans, actually, I would say. Um, and are there specific restrictions on how this money can be sent in addressing the needs? I think of transportation needs. I know, um, Athena has talked to us about the need, transportation needs in particular, and the, the range of services that are available, but may not be accessible to folks. Um, can you talk about any specific restrictions on how we can spend it in terms of services, please?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Corran. Um, again, Barbara Bencomo for the record. Um, yes, I have a couple of slides here on allowable uses under the terms of the settlement. There are some general categories for treatment, prevention, and then kind of an, another catch-all category. But you'll see some of the, some of the things we talked about today related to medication-assisted, uh, treatment, for example, um, uh, solutions within the criminal justice system, that's come up before, some training, research. And then I had, um, compiled a list of some examples of things that we saw in the documentation related to the settlement that, um, are allowable uses for these funds. And you definitely see that transportation is there. Um, there's drop, job training as well. Actually, when I, when I look through the, um, the allowable uses, they're quite broad. Um, but, but there are, there are, there is a framework for that. So we would want, we are going to be mindful of that, um, in the recommendations. Uh, but here's an examples of some of the allowable uses. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much. Um, and I think, and, and one other thing just related to the, the distance question, I would also add that folks in Hatch would have to cross through a Border Patrol checkpoint. And so, in terms of accessing services, that's also a really important barrier to consider. Um, I hope that we can think collaboratively about how, how to address that specific barrier, um, in our county. But more toward the, the, I just really want to appreciate the work that you all have done, and more toward the comment more than a question. I do think often, um, it's very easy to say, "Oh, look, we as a council, we as a commission, we as a group, did this thing, one concrete thing." Often literally concrete, um, as we love to do, build buildings. And I would just ask that, I hope that we can consider the diversity of things that folks have identified. I hope that in our, in our addressing these issues, we can prioritize saving lives, as is required, but also sort of indicated by some of the things that Athena mentioned, and really do a range of things, because there isn't, we can't build a building and fix this problem by any means. And, and I think, I really have hope that we can, that we can come up with a diverse and responsive, um, range of things that are addressing this in community. And so I just issue that challenge to my colleagues to, to be complicated in the way that we, that we respond to this. And I thank you all for being complicated in presenting this information and, and giving us a lot of really good insight. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much to our commission colleagues for, um, joining us today. Um, it's great to have you here. And thank you all very much for the work that you've put in already, and certainly to the advisory group. Um, I just have a few questions and also a couple of comments. Um, I'm curious about the advisory council and how often they're meeting.
Hi there. The advisory council meets once a month.
Thank you. And that was Ms. Thorpe, for the record. Once a month, awesome. Thank you. Um, that's a lot of work. And I just want to commend you all for your commitment to that and for your commitment to our community. Um, Ms. Olivares, you talked about, in, on page fifteen, you talked about twenty-twenty-three data not being published yet. I'm curious if you could talk about who publishes that data?
Liz Olivares at Crimson Research. And, um, so some of this data, we, like, the, the one that I did receive was from HIDA, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Authority, um, or area program, excuse me. And they get their data from NMDOH and the Office of Medical Investigators.
Okay.
So the data's still being cleaned up and, yeah, for the same reasons that NMIbest hasn't published anything.
Okay.
Is what I'm, what I'm presuming would be the limitations to it, just cleaning it up.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, um, similarly, on that page, on page sixteen, um, I'm curious about, um, you have on here, there's no data necessarily on here for under twenty-five. And I guess I am curious, just to Ms. Huckabee's point about the overrepresentation of youth. And obviously, youth are important. We want to be preventative with youth, right? Um, and I also understand the other coin of that around who is actually being impacted, who is actually dying, who is actually losing their homes and their livelihoods because of addiction. And obviously, we need to put significant amount of resources in harm reduction, not just prevention, um, because there's unfortunately too many people there, right? And so I am just curious about some of that discrepancy in the data. And, um, if, are we just not allowed to see overdose data for minors? Is that not public?
It's public. We just don't have a lot of minors that are, that are dying. So it's good news for us.
That is good news.
Yeah. However, we did see that Doñana County had two deaths among zero-to-four-year-olds in twenty-twenty-two, and four across the state of New Mexico. So half of that came from Doñana County. Yeah. That, I mean, that's, it's interesting. But, uh, to Athena's point also, the overdose deaths among the age groups is, changes every single year.
Sure.
So it's never like one concrete group. But I did notice the trend between the twenty-five to fifty-four-year-old groups. And those are the, there's those top three that are repeating every year. Um, and in the raw data, we saw that, um, the top among twenty, in twenty-twenty-three, um, the highest rates were among twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds, and the second group was forty-five to fifty-four-year-olds, um, who had over, fatal overdose.
Right.
But it, it is interesting. And, and I, I don't think it's that, I don't think the challenges are that there's no transparency in the data. I think it's just that it's not moving fast enough. Like, there, we need more support, more people on it to get it cleaned up and get it ready for us. So maybe that would be a, a state recommendation.
Okay. But there is, the, the data is out on minors and this issue. It's just, the good thing is that we're not seeing?
Correct. We're just not seeing it happening in, in that age group.
Okay.
As high. So it's lower, and I only reported like the top three, because I couldn't print, I couldn't present on my, my nice graphs.
Yeah.
That were created. But it will be included in the report.
Thank you. Um, just in terms of more data collection, do we have plans to do that? Um, obviously, it seems like that's the ask here today, but was that already a plan?
Sheriff Thorpe, opioid settlement coordinator. It is up to the advisory council how they want to prioritize with, given the approved core strategies of opioid settlement spending. Like we said earlier, you all are the first to hear this information. Our advisory council has not even received this, aside from our members that are here today. Um, so this month, they will be presented this information, and they will begin to start prioritizing based on the data that is there. So we'll start, we'll start to have those conversations, and we'll start to prioritize within the approved strategies. But, um, it's gonna be, I don't want to say a slower process, but once we start deciding, then we present to the county and city with some of those recommendations. So that's kind of the process. Did I answer your question? Did you want to say anything about that, Liz?
I'd like to add that the focus group content was substantial. We did a years-long project in three weeks. Um, so even that data is limited. Um, and I was hesitant to, to report on anything with any specific language, just because it's so raw. It's, it's just, you know, one person, two, two people. We had three people who represented southern Doñana County. Um, I mean, those numbers are very small. Um, we would need more. And I did let the county know that we'd be open to accepting more surveys, survey data, um, because our aim was to achieve two hundred participants on that, and then, and then see that through. So we are open to receiving more of that and analyze that to include in our final report. However, the focus group work is substantial, and I don't think that we would be able to provide that in a short timeframe and turn it around for, uh, um, you know, considerations.
Mayor Protem, if I might add, and I think we alluded to this earlier, once, once we get the final report from NMSU, the advisory council, as Sheriff said, is going to review that. Um, and one of the things that will need to be reviewed is the presence of data gaps and whether we're sufficient in order to, to make those, uh, recommendations. So that, that will be part of the evaluation of the final report of the needs assessment.
Thank you. Sure. I think it's not totally fair that I can say there are data gaps when you still need to do that analysis, right? But it is clear to me that, um, there are some, the county's very big. And, you know, I'd love to understand, um, what's happening in Solomon Park, what's happening in Valde, what's happening in Hatch. I think that's incredibly important. I also would love to better understand, um, our unhoused population. If we have already on here, in this PowerPoint, said that unhoused population is a target population, um, how, how many focus groups did we do at Community of Hope? And like, those are the kinds of questions that I would love to see answered. I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I just recently got an email from a mom who was really, who was just, just feels powerless about the kinds of resources that are out there for her son. And last week, I was hanging out with Project Light and the social workers there and folks there. And they're talking to me about, also, like, moms and grandparents and people are going to their office, just sitting down, just wanting to be heard, because this problem is, um, deeply overwhelming. And I think people are almost expecting us to make a little bit of magic with this money, um, which also feels really daunting. And I think, I think we're all up to it, though. And so I think we just have to, like, deeply understand specifically the folks who are struggling with this right now, not just the informants. It's definitely the folks with lived, there is no better expertise than lived experience, in my opinion. Um, and so I think that if, if, to me, if there's going to be gaps in the data, it's, it's that, it's hearing from more directly impacted people, people who've been through, um, substance abuse, or people who are currently going through it, and, and what the limitations are of receiving care. Um, so that's, that's, um, really all I have. Um, I do want to say that a while ago, I read a quote that said, um, oh, gosh, let me find it, because I'm gonna, um, mess it up. It said, "The opposite of addiction is not sobriety. The opposite of addiction is connection." And I think as, um, this community has shown time and time again, we can definitely stand next to each other and to folks who are struggling the most. And I just want to be able to invest in strategies that are effective, that work, um, and not just throw people in jail for substance abuse. So, um, thank you for the work you're doing.
Mayor Protem, if I may, I think Ms. Huckabee wanted to address the focus group, uh, comment and question you had.
Hi, uh, one more time, sorry if I'm talking too much. Uh, Athena Huckabee, uh, member of the opioid advisory council. Um, we, the, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the focus groups and the diff, um, sorry, not the focus groups, the outreach survey, and the difficulty in conducting that, and the skill set that is necessary to sit down and have somebody who is unhoused, perhaps waiting at a bus stop, and asking them a twenty-minute survey about their drug use, right? Um, it's pretty difficult to get people to strike that right tone, to have somebody be interested in speaking to you. Um, I definitely did push, um, we all pushed, I think, for, um, not only lived, right? Um, I'm a person with lived experience. I've been sober for, you know, twelve years now, but people with living experience. And I think that's really important. Um, we only had a few weeks and a few volunteers, and so it was difficult to get out into those areas of the county. And I'm not personally convinced as like a middle-class white lady that folks in Chaparral might resonate with me the best. You know, so I went to the areas where I felt where people would actually open up to me and answer questions about, "Have you used fentanyl in thirty, the last thirty days? Have you used methamphetamine in the last thirty days? Where did you sleep in the last thirty days?" These are deeply personal invasive questions, um, that are hard for people to answer, and a degree of trust has to be built. So I did just want to emphasize that, I think, with the council, the difficulty of conducting these, the building of trust, the importance about sending the right people into the right communities to ask the right questions, and also, you know, showing up with something to give in exchange. We had ten-dollar gift cards available from Walmart, which was helpful. I also provided people with a burrito and a bottle of water. Um, I literally sat on the corner in, um, you, sorry, didn't mean to advance the slide, uh, you know, on Amador and Solano in the middle of the street where that intersection is, and met with people. So, you know, I think that the data that we did get, though, as you are saying, is not as ranging as we want it to be, the fact that people were even willing to sit down and answer these questions, I think, is incredible. Um, so I just kind of wanted to point that out. Um, two other gaps that I actually noticed while I was sitting here. One, uh, somebody did text me, you know, "I wish, unfortunately, these people that had died of overdose in the state of New Mexico this year were able to talk to us." You know, unfortunately, the dead don't talk. Um, you know, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, throughout all of this, there has been no mention of pregnant people. And I think that that's a gap that we need to look at as far as, you know, services that are available, stigma, and things of that nature. So I just wanted to make those last comments. Thank you again for your, um, willingness to hear me out as I sort of sit in the front row and jump in for comments. I just, um, I'm so passionate about this, and it's so important to me that the city and the county spend this money in ways that are going to impact the population and reduce deaths. So, I appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Athena. I think, uh, it was Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bencomo and your team and everyone for all the hard work you're doing here to get, to help us with this. I, I have one quick question and a couple of the comments. Will we lose this money if we don't act on it right away? Because I don't, as I understand it, this money's gonna be here regardless of how long it takes us to get to this problem. Am I right?
Commissioner Reynolds, that is correct. There is not, uh, a, a time delimited period to spend the funds.
Beautiful. Because as, um, as Counselor Corran said, I mean, buying buildings is not gonna help us. We gotta figure out something different. Um, on page sixteen, I'd like to talk about that slide for a second, if you don't mind.
Oops.
I noticed on page sixteen in the second section there, you said it's a race and ethnicity you show as being, uh, the people affected by overdose are Hispanic sixty-seven percent. Uh, had the highest fatal, fatality rate in white, twenty-eight percent, black, African. Has anybody else noticed that that follows our census data? So, so the, so the point I'm making there is, this data doesn't help us. If it's following the census data, then all we're saying is we're recognizing that the population distribution is, is affected equally. So we have to try to figure out a different root cause, uh, associated with this and say, "Okay, so now do we distribute our, our resources, uh, on the same as the census, or do we try to find out if there's different root causes here that we can address with this money that are gonna better affect the Hispanic population than they are the white population and so forth?" So even though, even though there's distribution similar to the census, more people are still dying. So we have to, we have to, how to, how to solve those problems. Um, that was one of them. Another one is I noticed that, um, if we have somebody who's disabled and has a disability, they actually get some, some additional support other than just services, like, as a, for instance, if they're going to college, they actually get, uh, some of their books paid for. They get, you know, um, some other help with re, other resources that they need. I think as part of this, if I heard some of the data correctly, is limitations on, um, transportation, limitations on access to, uh, help and services, uh, having to miss work in order to have these services done.
Sure.
I think we have to think of a program that's going to I think we have to think of a program that's going to also support surrounding services, i.e., if I'm gonna take off from work in order to get help with my drug addiction, then I need to have some way to feed myself. So I think we have to think more of a comprehensive program that says the surrounding services may actually end up being more important and along with the connection, Protem, Mayor Protem, Bencomo said, of the, the connections are more important. So I think we have to take a, take, take step back. We need more data. We gotta get a whole lot more data. And then we have to also step back and say, this is not a problem that anybody has really solved before, so we have to take a creative look at it to try to find a solution that's gonna work for us. And it's, and it's not gonna work in the cities, the way it's gonna work in the counties, the way it's gonna work in other communities. And just, and I applaud you guys, but I tell you, we, we cannot rush into this. We've got to do the right thing. And Commissioner Sanchez said, what is our plan for collecting the right data? And I think I, I agree. If we don't, if we don't identify the correct problem by correcting the right data, then we're obviously gonna solve the wrong problem. So we have to make sure we get the right information we need in order to properly identify the problems and then work on the solutions that are gonna work and then follow a closed-loop process, because we might try a couple of things that don't work. And we need to be willing to go back up and try some other things and make sure we're doing the right things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for, for what you've done today.
All right, thank you. Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do have a question for either one of you or Ms. Bencomo, well, whatever. So on page 47, I believe it was page 47, yes, page 47. The last dot there, youth-focused programs to prevent drug abuse. So that touches on what I raised. So my question is, is anything being pursued in that? Or what you presented was data that you collected. And so is anything being done about youth-focused programs to prevent drug abuse?
So Counselor Flores, Barbara Bencomo for the record. So these are examples of potential expenditures that could be made. Today, what we were doing is presenting data that will help to inform the recommendations for expenditures that will come forward. So that will be the, part of the next steps of the process. Again, we'll look at the final report from NMSU, understand if there are data gaps that need to be addressed, if there's more collection necessary, and then evaluation recommendations to the body that might include any of these or more potential uses of the funds, depending on what the community needs are assessed to be.
So I think some of my colleagues up here have also focused on the causes. So is that being explored? Is the money going to be spent there? Because I think that gathering the data is like looking at the dead horse almost. It's like, let's look at, you know, what is, what the root causes are, because then we'll, you know, 10 years from now, we're gonna be dealing with this again, because we haven't reached a solution. And the solution isn't necessarily, I mean, it's helpful to those who are addicted, but to prevent people to become addicted. And I'll bet you my bottom dollar, I mean, I'm sure, I didn't see any questions about, and I, I don't know if it's appropriate, but, I mean, to ask, you know, why, when, when was the first time you used drugs and what was going on in your life? Is that too intrusive? Is that not appropriate? It seems to me that I would like to know. If you don't know what the problem was, again, how are you going to find a solution? And so the youth-focused programs to prevent drug abuse could then really, a drug abuse program could be based on the information that's gathered. So I hope that happens.
Absolutely. That is the intent. And I think one of the things you saw on the slides was the impact or the importance of breaking the cycle. We talked about children who are in homes where there are drug users and stopping that cycle of use. And I don't know if any of my colleagues would like to respond further to that, to the comment and question, but that was something that struck me as I saw the, the data and the impact on potential use of the funds.
Yes, Liz Olivares, and I could add a little bit about the, like, the initial use or relapse. We did ask the 53 participants that question. And interestingly, we had a list from Vital Strategies of possible responses that people could answer. And when we looked at those responses, we actually saw that, that the other category or like a new response, that one was one of the highest, it was the third-highest response. So the, the responses were everywhere. There wasn't a standardized reason for anyone. And I'm, I'm trying to recall what slide that was on. Give me. I believe 38, on slide 38. Excuse me, on 37, where we asked, what has influenced your initial use or relapse of substance use? The number one reason was stress, then the social environment. And then in between that, we had another category that I did not report here, but it was, it was a high percentage, because like one or two people, again, these are, this is a small group of, a small sample size, that are reporting reasons such as COVID, ADHD, depression, to escape reality, lack of support. So I, my point is that the reasons are everywhere, and I think that also speaks to our national challenge. I mean, if it was a straightforward answer where it was the same reason, then we might not see these problems generally.
I recognize what that says.
Oh, yes.
But my, my, my point, I think I'm not making my point. 35.8% of us up here, I'm sure, have stress. We don't turn to drugs. We didn't turn to drugs. Well, maybe somebody did. I shouldn't, I should speak for myself. But, yeah, so it, it still doesn't, you're, you're stating the outcomes, I mean, of whatever their circumstance was. And I, I would like to see what the circumstance was that led to that. And then if we could have a better social system where our schools are participating, where, you know, our, you know, our police force, my, my kids, you know, back in the dark ages when I had young kids, there was a DARE program in California. I don't know if there's anything like that, drug abuse or something. And the kids did learn, police officers would go into the schools and talk to, to kids about this, that, you know, about drugs and, you know, alcohol abuse and stuff like that. So that's what I'm referring to. And I hope, I, I hope, I mean, I, I think the, the information you gathered is important, without a doubt, in terms of knowing what the objective conditions are. But they still don't address the cause. And, and I think that if we identify the cause, then we can, then we can have solutions. And a lot of this addresses, well, you know, this is what we've done to whatever. And I think Ms. Huckabee is correct. I mean, trying to talk to someone, you know, to, who's waiting for a bus and, you know, I mean, anyway, but, but thank you again, Ms. Bencomo. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Just real quick, Counselor Flores, I think DARE programs have been just historically debunked as effective, so. I do just want to note, just here in my colleagues and I think some of the comments, I think there is also just a balance to be stricken, because I certain, how much money we have is truly not that much money when we really think about it. And I would hate for us to use a significant portion of that in data research and studies and experts, when we need to be using it in the community, right? Like when they need to be going to the folks that are mostly impacted. And so while I do think there is more room for data collection in some of these gaps, I, I also believe that there is urgency. People are dying. So there is urgency to the way that we act around some of these decisions. But I, I don't want us to get bogged down in, like, in all the data collection and everything has, we cannot let perfection be the enemy of progress and, and then, you know, spend down this money on things that are ultimately impacting people's lives. So I just wanted to make that last comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem, Bencomo. I appreciate your, your thoughts. And I think, I, I wanted to, I think as we've had further discussion, and I think in particular to also to Counselor Coran's comments about, you know, trying to stay away from, you know, having to do brick and mortar solutions to a lot of these. I, I would, you know, as we look forward and trying to figure out next steps, I would love, or be open to the suggestion, I think, as, as the Mayor Protem had suggested, of having, you know, steps, having parallel paths. Because I think we do need some more data to figure out specifically, are we seeing, you know, I, I think with, with some more solutions. So I, I would support, you know, having next steps with some actual programs or solutions that could be presented. And then also some opportunity to look at that data collection that was gonna be established to figure out, you know, I, I think in, in two manners when I say data collection, because I think, one, I would love to understand more, you know, what is the population we're seeing? How do we continue to differentiate the services that will be best, you know, received by those in the community? But the second part would be, as you, as we continue on, I would love to understand some of these solutions that we're, that we're investing in, are we getting the results? And if not, let's have an opportunity to pivot. Because I think if, especially if we're not gonna be, you know, putting significant investment into buildings but into programs, how do we start, you know, really looking at that data and then coming back? Because if, with this combined monies that we have with this settlement, and as they start to come in through the next years, how do we start to figure out, okay, this year, this worked. Okay, how do we look at next year? What can we revamp and, and get better at? And so on. And I, and that, you know, can be in the city, in the county. But I, I agree with, like I said, with the Mayor Protem's thought of, you know, let's not sit here and, and wait a long time before we start, you know, having some action.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. And, and I'll just say that alludes back to the comment from Commissioner Reynolds for a closed-loop system and back to our next steps in that whatever the expenditures are going to be, we have to be very intentional about developing that implementation plan, the data collection and tracking for the outcomes that we're looking for, and certainly bringing that back for potential adjustments or pivots, as you mentioned. I, I, I think that's very important. Free.
Anyone else? That's it? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to see if there's any members of the public that would like to come up and speak or make a comment.
Just real quick, not to take any of your time. My name's Robert Maitland. I don't know how many of you have went through withdrawals? How many of you have went through withdrawals in jail? We're real familiar with the ACES studies. You can't tell somebody to come back next Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoon when they're asking for help. They're probably not gonna come back next Tuesday at 2:00. As a matter of fact, I know of several people that have not come back next Tuesday at 2:00. Hopefully, they're none of your family members. Okay? We can't put off on doing something, right? There's a six-unit medical assisted detox currently in this town. It wanted to be a 10-person unit. That got shut down. If you want to do something real quick, increase from that six-person to a 10-person unit. That'll help get the ball rolling, because I know of a couple of people right now that are on the waiting list. Those of us that are in the field see the urgency, you know? I apologize that we didn't get you more data. We were limited on our time, you know? We've actually asked to go out and get more, and we're waiting to hear if we can. So I don't know how many times you gotta, you guys gotta have more data. You gotta have more data. It goes back to trauma, right? Continued trauma, PTSD, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, come on up.
Nicole Martinez, Director of Mesia Valley Community of Hope. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, commissioners, I just wanted to give some quick examples of some other things that are being done across the state right now with some of the opioid settlement money, as you're considering how to go forward with expenditures. Behavioral Health Services Division has a couple of grant sources that they have dispersed funding to a bunch of agencies throughout the state. We are one of them. One of them is for people exiting incarceration who are getting treatment. And the other is a fresh start program, and it's specifically for people with opioid use disorder. So when they first rolled this out, it was really a pilot program based on like an eviction prevention program. So it does target people who are unhoused, trying to get into housing, and people who are about to become homeless. And it was a six-month rental assistance or $10,000 per person. And very quickly, you know, we started this in November. We were like six months for somebody with opioid use disorder. It's not very long to get stable, especially if you don't have those social networks and the connections and things that we were talking about. So we've had some feedback sessions with them since the grant's about to end. So talking about longer rental assistance time for people, and again, making sure that they're getting treatment. But that's been a really great program. We've served a ton of people. It's strengthened our collaborations with our service providers. But there's still some other opportunities here. I think services are really important, again, as we talk about, you know, that we need the connections, social supports. So having flexible funding to support people in permanent supportive housing programs that do have opioid use disorder would be really important. Some other ideas we had talked about with the county, but we haven't gone forward yet, but maybe reconsider is doing something like a harm reduction vending machine at places like Community of Hope that are hotspots. And additionally, we just want to extend us as a solution, hopefully, for if you do more data collection through outreach. We have an outreach team that asks these questions every day with our, our unhoused clients and can definitely tag team. So we have people of all races and languages and hopefully just, we want to be part of the solution. So we have some ideas, too, and we know that we are very much impacted and really want to support housing in these efforts. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nicole. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seen none? All right. Well, thank you all. Thanks, the presenters. Thank you again, commissioners, for being here and joining us in this joint work session. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Graham.
Second by Flores.
This is on the motion to adjourn the joint work section. Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Coran?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Okay. Again, thanks. We'll take a 10-minute recess and come back with the work session.